Six oh two, October twentieth, twenty twenty five. A meeting regularly of New Canaanian Independent School District Board of Trustees is hereby called to order. Let the minutes show that all board members in attendance will be exempt. Mrs. Gregwell, Mrs. Hopkins, and Mr. Nixon. This meeting has been called in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter five five hundred. All items that will be discussed or voted on this evening have been posted as required by state law. I want to extend a warm welcome to everyone here tonight. We are pleased that you've chosen to be with us this evening. On behalf of the New Canaanian Board of Trustees, we are pleased that you came to join us in celebrating achievement, set goals, listen to reports, approve budgets, contracts, personal appointments, and to make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or to solve the problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of our superintendent. This meeting is in the public, not a meeting of the public, and as our guests, we welcome you to observe and to listen. Again, we're pleased that you have taken the time this evening to join us, and we thank you for your interest in New Canaanian Independent School District. We now ask that you would sign and share cell phones to avoid interruption. Please rise for the invocation that will be given by Mr. Alters, who pledges allegiance and honor the Texas flag to be led by Mr. Trout.
Dear Lord, we're thankful just for the opportunity to come today, Lord, and just represent the district of New Canaanian High School. Lord, we're thankful for the administrators, the students, the staff, the teachers, and everybody that makes this district such a great district. We want to represent you. Lord, pray that you guide us tonight as we make decisions for the district, pray that you guide us in making decisions for our students, and the best decisions we can make. Just say it.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, united in Christ. Honored the Texas flag, our pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one united crystal.
Item two on the agenda is open forum. The board will now hear comments from you, but the persons who have signed up to speak. Is there anyone that's signed up to speak? No, okay. We'll move on to item three. Item three on the agenda is the superintendent's report, and it is presented by Mr. Calvert.
Yes, we have tonight. We have a couple of our elementary schools here who recognize us, and so this time I'm looking to recognize for the background, Mr. Carlisle and his folks from Highlands Elementary. What up?
Okay, as I recognize you, you're from my left side as I call you. Okay, so thank you guys, and good evening to the board members, and Mr. Calvert, for having us here today. It's my honor to recognize the incredible individuals at Highlands Elementary for the very first time. Each of these honorees embody the IB learn and profile traits that define who we are as a campus, which is caring and principled, reflective, and open-minded. First, I'd like to ask Miss Tambria Shaw, please come over here to my left. Mrs. Shaw is one of our fourth grade teachers. Mrs. Shaw traveled all the way from Mississippi to join our team and embark on this IB PYP journey alongside Highlands Elementary. She is reflective, always examining her practice to improve instruction, principled, and holding herself and her students to the highest standards. Mrs. Shaw builds strong, meaningful relationships with her students. She's intentional in her teaching, goal-oriented in her planning, and truly believes her students can achieve at the very highest levels. She represents what it means to be a lifelong learner, and we are so proud she chose to make Highlands her home. Thank you, Mrs. Shaw. We really, really appreciate you. Stay seated right there and just move down a little bit, and then the next person will stand here, okay? Next, I'd like to recognize if Ms. Anna Vasquez could come over here, please. Ms. Anna Vasquez is one of our in-class support paraprofessionals. I had the privilege of working with Ms. Vasquez in the past, and she wanted to join us over at Highlands Elementary for this new adventure as well. Ms. Vasquez exemplifies the IB traits of being caring and balanced. She understands that every student has unique needs, and she meets them with compassion, patience, and precision. She's knowledgeable about her students' goals and tracks their progress intentionally and works bell-to-bell every single day. There is not a moment in her day that she is not with students. In more than a decade of educational leadership, I've never seen a more committed par educator. And her dedication to ensuring that all students experience success sets a standard for excellence on our campus. Thank you, Mrs. Vasquez. Next, maybe a familiar face. Ms. Hilda Snow, can you come over here to the left? This is actually Ms. Hilda Snow's first time to work with me, but this will be her sixth time to be recognized in this capacity. Opening a new building is no small task, and Mrs. Snow did this with grace and an unwavering smile. She embodied the IB learner profile trait by being a risk-taker, stepping into unknown challenges, and launching a brand-new campus. From unloading over fifty pallets that were delivered in the middle of our hallway with just a week and a half to open to keeping every classroom and hallway spotless, Mrs. Snow leads her team with quiet strength and pride. Her work ethic, positivity, and leadership have made a tremendous difference in creating the warm, welcoming environment that defines Highlands Elementary. Thank you very much, Mrs. Snow. Next, we have Ms. Annette Raina. Come on over here, please. Awesome, thank you. Ms. Raina is a communicator and a caring leader. She joined Highlands as our cafeteria manager and quickly built a collaborative team that starts every day with a smile and service. Her team may be small, but they are very powerful. They keep things going. Her can-do spirit and willingness to help anywhere on campus truly captures the heart of who we are at Highlands. People who lead with kindness and community, because of her, our students start their day not just fed, but encouraged. Thank you very much, Ms. Raina. And I'm very excited to introduce to you Ian. Ian Dacus here is a fine young man, and finally representing our students tonight is Ian Dacus. If you want to step right over here, there you go. He's a first grader who perfectly embodies the IB learner profile. He's open-minded, caring, and always inquisitive. Eager to learn and share joys with everyone around him, one of my favorite moments with Ian was when he told me, "I used to be a bulldog, but now I'm an owl." Not a night owl, though. Because I can't stay up late, I'll always remember that, and that honesty and humor captures exactly what it makes him, a Highlands Elementary owl. I am truly grateful to work alongside. Here you go, Ian. This is just for you, okay? I sure do appreciate you, Ian. Hey, stay up here for one minute, okay? We're gonna go up there and shake their hands in one second, okay? I am truly grateful to work alongside these outstanding individuals. They each represent the best of Highlands Elementary, reflective, principled, and caring, and full of heart. Together, they remind us daily that learning and leadership are about people, and I could not be prouder to recognize them tonight. Thank you. Ms. Shaw seems to need to go.
Oh, yay, more. That's great.
All right, while they're taking their picture, I'd like to recognize Ms. Mueller from Porter Elementary and her folks. Come on down.
Thank you so much for giving us this opportunity to recognize the amazing people at Porter Elementary. We want to start first with Ms. Aurora Garcia. She is a member of our cafeteria staff. Ms. Garcia is always kind and welcoming to every student and coworker. She greets each child who walks through the lunch line with a warm smile and makes a point to know their names. She truly takes pride in being a part of our students' well-being while they're at school and always strives to do her best. Ms. Garcia is consistently pleasant with her team, dependable in every situation, and always ready to help whenever she is needed. Her kindness, responsibility, and teamwork make a difference at Porter Elementary every Next up, we have Mr. Richard Menchu. Mr. Menchu has been up here with me before, and it is truly because I can't express how much he does for us each day. He not only keeps our school clean and beautiful, he is also our resident technology expert. He creates these amazing Google Forms that help us manage everything, from where the furniture is, it's a big building, we have a lot of kids, so from where we put it to where it needs to be, to small and big custodial things that we need, and all of our maintenance requests. I can't count how many times I run through the building, including this morning, in the halls, looking for him, oftentimes calling his name loudly, because I am in need of his expertise to fix something, figure something out, or just make something work again. Mr. Richard solves all the problems. He makes the impossible possible, and he does it all with his calm and relaxed vibe. He is funny, kind, and always willing to help. But my favorite thing about him is that our students refer to him simply as Mr. Richard and often say, "Let's go find Mr. Richard." Next up, we have Ms. Luna. Ms. Luna is a Title I paraprofessional on our campus, but to say that that is her only title doesn't capture all the things that she does for our students and staff. Every day, she works with our most struggling students, providing targeted interventions and strategies that not only support the curriculum each day, but give the students the confidence and skills they need to be successful beyond the classroom. She wears so many hats on campus. She's our backup nurse, our car rider line extraordinaire, the person who makes it run smoothly each day, our holiday float creative director, and truly the heart of our campus, culture, and climate. She and her team also help design the beautiful displays you see throughout our building that celebrate the uniqueness of our student population while showcasing our academic expectations. Ms. Luna's creativity, care, and commitment make Porter Elementary a brighter place every day. I think that I'm very lucky that I get to call her friend and share so many moments of laughter and fun each day. Thank you, Ms. Luna. Next up, we have the amazing Ms. Martinez. Ms. Martinez is a fourth-grade dual-language teacher at Porter Elementary. She is one of those people, teachers, that just gets it. She knows instruction inside and out, and she is deeply committed to making every single moment in her classroom count. She is a natural leader on campus, collaborative, dependable, and always willing to support others. Her students consistently perform at high levels because of her care and the attention that she brings to her craft each day. She knows each of her students personally, their strengths, their struggles, and what motivates them to grow. I trust her judgment completely and often seek out her expertise when making instructional decisions, as evident by our text chain earlier today. She also has a student-teacher who joined us last December, and I have to say, I can't wait to hire her. Watching her and how she has flourished under Ms. Martinez in the classroom during instruction and in planning is truly an incredible sight to see. Ms. Martinez's ability to grow and inspire others truly shows the depth of leadership and passion, her depth of leadership and passion for what she does each day. We are so proud to have her represent Porter Elementary tonight. Next up, we have our fifth-grade student, Gustavo Gallegos. Gustavo is an outstanding student who leads by example every single day. He serves on our student council, is a member of our safety patrol, and demonstrates academic excellence in everything that he does. His teachers had a few things to say about him. They actually had a lot, so I'm going to paraphrase. Both teachers, Ms. Gill, his math teacher, and Ms. Armstrong, his reading-language arts teacher, consistently commented about his kindness, his leadership, and his ability to make other students in the classroom join in, right? Get on board, do what's right. Another thing that resonated throughout what they said was, "He is an outstanding student who is constantly striving to be better than he was the day before." Thank you, Gustavo, for being such a shining example of leadership, character, and hard work. We definitely cannot wait to see the amazing places that you go. Thank you.
All right, at this time, I want to ask Mr. Carroll to start making his way this way. As y'all know, as a fast-growth district, one of the tools that we have to use every once in a while is rezoning. It's definitely not a popular process all the time, but a necessary process, and so I wanted to allow Mr. Carroll to come and discuss the rezoning proposal that we have for the board tonight, some technical difficulties on these screens behind us. So if anybody wants to get up and look at the map, she'll have to go to the back of the room back there behind you. But, Mr. Carroll?
Good evening. We have a... Every year, we have to look at rezoning as we're growing, we're adding campuses and things. This year, we're starting a little early because it affects secondary campus students. They have to do course requests, so it'll help with the fine arts, the extracurricular things, to get these in as soon as possible so Ms. Gates can go out and hire the best candidates for our lovely school district. So we're starting about a month early, but we have two different scenarios for you tonight. The first one involves the Holly Ridge and Summer Hills neighborhoods off of Sorders Road. Currently, they're going to Woodridge Forest, which is the longest stretch of drive for any parent in the district for middle school. Our proposal is to move those kids in those two neighborhoods over to White Oak, who has the room for them. Instead of going seven miles across Fifty-Nine to Woodridge, we're gonna go a mile and a half to White Oak, which makes logistic sense. It'll help with the bus drivers. It'll probably free up some of those parents to get their kids on the bus instead of the car riders. That's the first proposal. The second one involves the feeder pattern for New Canaanian High School, and Kiefer Crossing, and New Canaanian Elementary are growing because of our construction of new homes, so we need to pull some of those kids off that feeder pattern. So we've been moving some kids around the stadium around, right here, so right over here in the corner on the northwest side, is a couple of streets, Trinity Way, Vic Drive, Clyde Drive, Dogwood Drive, and Strickland Drive, that we can pull some kids off, move them over to Valley Ranch Elementary, Pine Valley, and Porter High School, which is our three smallest in that feeder pattern. We're looking at about a hundred kids at elementary, probably twenty-five to thirty middle school, twenty-five to thirty high school kids, and that will illuminate. It's hard when you're a growing district, you have to have the capacity. And as we're getting bigger, Tavola West is exploding, so New Canaanian Elementary's went up two-hundred-and-fifty kids in a year and a half. So we have to have a little more room. Even though we're opening a new building, we still like to balance it out before we get up in that area, so that's why we're looking at that as tonight. So that's our two different zones that we're looking to rezone tonight. Any questions, concerns? Talk too fast?
What is that like?
They're right around eight-hundred, so it fluctuates a little bit, so there's plenty of room to add another hundred kids without. I think they're like seven-eight-six the last time I checked, so we can add a hundred kids, and Ms. Trout will love me, but yes, we can add a little bit over there, so.
Y'all have gotten feedback from the community on this?
Yeah, we posted it last week. Dr. Powers put it out. I got three inquiries. Two were from students, and we answered those questions, and one of them wanted to know that she's in the actual Summer Hills neighborhood, does she go to Porter or to West Fork? We didn't change their elementary or their feeder for that neighborhood, so they stayed the same, so she'll go to West Fork. And then one parent, I don't remember the parent's name per se, but they're literally on the line of the second proposal. Their house is the last house that doesn't change, so they were concerned. Which way do we go? So we answered that question, so it wasn't bad. Three inquiries right now, and most of them were pretty self-easy to adjust and answer.
So with the Tavola West, and we're relocating New Canaanian Elementary over there, the parents that are moving to Valley Ranch, it's actually gonna be easier for them to get to Valley Ranch than to get over there to the new New Canaanian Elementary.
I've only been in New Canaanian eight years with the Fourteen Eight-five and Fifty-Nine interchange.
Downtown.
Downtown. That's gotta be the most traveled road in the country, especially at dismissal.
I wouldn't say in the country.
I promise you, it takes our buses from Kiefer Crossing about fifteen minutes to get through that intersection every day, so.
I can't get to Sonic at three-thirty, and it's up to me.
Gotta get to Route Forty-Four, so I understand. Any other questions? All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, last on the list, I'd like to ask Dr. Kandarko and Mr. Sabios to come up. We are in a turnaround plan situation with Kiefer Crossing Middle School, and so we've had to make some changes over there. Want to recognize the staff that showed up tonight. Appreciate y'all guys coming and supporting these two gentlemen up here. It's been well-received so far. Just want to say thank you to the people that have really just dug in and doing what's best for kids over there, so it's noticed and appreciated, so just want to say thank y'all for that. So what Dr. Kandarko and Mr. Sabios are gonna talk about tonight again is the plan that was presented to our parents at the campus a couple weeks ago. So Dr. Kandarko, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you guys for allowing us to come up here and speak to you guys about the turnaround plan at Kiefer Crossing. First, I'd just like to thank Mr. Calvert. He's been very helpful in getting things turned around over there as far as up to date from where we were given this information. Also, Ms. Good and Ms. Monroe from their department, as soon as we found out from TEA that we were gonna be on a TAP plan, they jumped into action, and we developed a plan that you have in your notes with you, and so they have also sent over a lot of their people over to Kiefer Crossing the last few weeks to really dive into the data, to start developing plans on how we can build academic success there at Kiefer Crossing. Also, there's a lot of other departments that we would like to thank, and Student Services, HR also has helped with all the meetings that we've been a part of, pulling, you know, a lot of times, all the administrators are having to be in these meetings, and so we're shorthanded in the lunchroom, and so Student Services has come over to help, and then HR has helped us add some additional personnel over at Kiefer Crossing. I specifically want to talk about just the KCMS turnaround plan and how we've gotten here. As you're well aware, the state released the accountability ratings in September, and when those were released, Kiefer Crossing had two years of unacceptable. And so when that was brought to the attention of TEA, they reached out to us and let us know that Kiefer Crossing was gonna be on a TAP plan, which is a turnaround plan. And so what we are tasked with is developing this plan. As Mr. Calvert mentioned, we had a meeting with all of the Kiefer Crossing parents that were in the cafeteria about a week ago. We had about seventy to eighty parents there that were there, and we had some great questions that were asked to us about the plan itself, and so we were able to stick around the cafeteria after we presented the entire plan to them and answer individual questions to parents, and so we thought it went very well, and the parents went away. I'm very happy with what we had done there. And so when the plan was given to us, and I do want you to understand that it's our task to build this plan this year. We've taken it to the public, and now we've taken it to the board to be approved. The next step will be taking it to, sending it to TEA for their approval. We'll get back this approval in February, March, in that time, and it's for us to implement for the following school year. What we have already done with this plan is we've already jumped into action now because we are very optimistic if we can get out of this situation, we do not have to follow the TAP plan anymore. So our goal this school year is to be minimum C, but we are really hoping to get Kiefer Crossing to a B or an A, so we're out of the situation that we're in at Kiefer Crossing. And so some of the things that we've already done to help remedy the TAP is we, like Mr. Calvert said, we have made some leadership changes at Kiefer Crossing. Mr. Sabios, by way of West Fork High School, and then he was at Porter High School for the beginning of this school year as associate principal. We moved him over to Kiefer Crossing to be the principal there at, I mean, we moved him over from Porter High School to Kiefer Crossing to be the principal there at Kiefer Crossing. We've also moved Ms. Brittany Horton, who was an assistant principal at West Fork High School. She is now an added position there at Kiefer Crossing, and so Mr. Calvert again has been very gracious in allowing us to create this dean position at Kiefer Crossing that solely concentrates on the instructional side of Kiefer. And so, and then we've also moved Ms. Destiny Cook over from Porter High School. She was an instructional coach there, and she is now an instructional coach over at Kiefer Crossing Middle School, and so we're excited to have them over there. And as you can see, we also want to thank Ms. Heine and Dr. Miller. They've made some sacrifices themselves. As you can see, we've moved two people from Porter and one person from West Fork High School, so they have made those sacrifices on their campuses for the best, for the betterment of our district in trying to get Kiefer Crossing where it needs to be, and so want to thank them for what they've done to help Kiefer Crossing as well. Also, Mr. Sabios on the operational side, he has done a total reset there at Kiefer Crossing. I was there from the beginning of the school year with our team, Dr. Mesmer and our specialists, and we were there, and just seeing what he's done in the, I want to say eighteen days, I think is where we are about right now, sixteen to eighteen days that they've been on campus, just the difference from when you walk in the building to now has been tremendous. And there were great things happening at Kiefer, and I don't want to say that there weren't great things, there were some great things happening at Kiefer from the beginning of the school year, but just to see the changes on the, you know, what's expected of the students when they're walking into the cafeteria to walking in the hallways during transitions has been tremendous, and I think that's having a big impact on the success that they're seeing in the classroom. Also, just the communication that he has started with the parents, I'm sure you've seen a lot of things they've posted on social media, but just the constant communication that he's having with the parents and just the, again, when we had the parent meeting, just the people coming up to him and thanking him for being transparent and just knowing that the parents know what's going on on the campus has been very gracious in what they're doing there on the campus. On the curriculum side, again, even this summer, before we knew we were gonna be on the TAP plan, we knew from just some reports that Ms. Good had given us, that one thing that TEA had said is that we needed to adopt some HQIMs on that campus, and HQIMs are high-quality instructional material. And so this summer, with the help of staff members throughout the district, deans, principals, assistant principals, we looked at some different curriculum that TEA recognizes as HQIM, and we adopted STEM scopes for math. We already had Amplify, which is also deemed HQIM, and then we have SAVIS for science and social studies. And so all of those curriculums that we have asked our middle schools to follow are deemed HQIM by TEA, and so we have really implemented those on our middle school campuses, and those are non-negotiables from the district, that this is the curriculum that we are following. And so we've seen a tremendous impact already in the three months that we've been on these curriculums. We've also developed some data protocols that we look at data. Every time we have a district bundle, a district assessment, we look at the assessment, not just at Kiefer, but we also look at all the other three middle schools as well, and just compare, and we're having those collaborative conversations on, you know, if Kiefer's doing something really well and the other middle schools are, you know, just, hey, what are you guys doing that we're not doing? And those teachers are beginning to collaborate and work with one another to find the best practices in the district that they can take to their campuses as well. Also, just professional development, they've had PD with all the teachers, our dean, Ms. Our dean, Ms. Horton, and Ms. Cook, along with the other ILT members, have really dove into the planning with the teachers on their campuses. And so, they are in there developing the plans that follow not only the curriculum, but also our teaching on a DOK level that meets what's expected of them when they are, you know, when we take the star. And so, we're making sure that we're meeting on those levels. I mean, I just want to say the one thing that we are truly excited about is we are taking these practices, and we're seeing this as an opportunity to grow as a district because these are some really good practices that the TA have asked us to put in place. And so, we're really looking at how we can bridge what we're doing at Kiefer and take that over to White Oak, to Woodridge, and to Pine Valley, and really get those teams working together so we can see successes at all the middle schools. And so, that's what we've done to date, but we are really working hard every day. And again, these are the guys that are beats on the ground every day in the trenches with those students over at Kiefer Crossing, and we've seen some tremendous growth in the three months that, since the school year started over at Kiefer Crossing. We're very optimistic of what's going to happen this school year there.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
What was it? We got an F rating last year and the year before, so that's 23, 24, and then, 24, 25. Do you know what the rating was in 22, 23?
So, the rating before the last two years was a D. And so, that's why, that's why, like I said, we, two years of unacceptable. We don't want to get another D because then another D will be considered an F because of the two Ds that we've had. And so, but again, we're very optimistic, Ms. Carroll, and the rest of the board, of what they're doing at Kiefer Crossing with, again, and it's not just a campus thing, it's a whole district. Everyone's there, helping, developing plans, and really supporting with what we're trying to do there at Kiefer Crossing.
What were the ratings for our other three middle schools?
So, this past year...
If you know, if you don't know, that's okay.
Woodridge was a C, and then, Pine Valley and White Oak were Ds.
Okay. So, we're putting something in place to keep them from going to an F, right?
So, yes, ma'am, again, you know, it's, with the help of the principals and ILT members on their teams, and again, with Ms. Monroe and her team, special programs, we are really doing everything that we're doing at Kiefer, trying to take to all the other campuses. And again, we're, the same conversations we're having with Kiefer, we're having with the other middle schools as well, because we really want to get everyone, not even, we don't want to go down this road again. So, we really want to get all of our schools to Cs. We're optimistic that we can hopefully get everyone to a B at least this next school year.
That'd be great. I think that putting things in place is the right thing to do, and I appreciate everybody working so hard to get that done. It's not easy. Change isn't easy, but we recognize that there's a lot of great things going on at every single campus, and that that indicator, that F rating is not an indicator of the heart and soul that goes on every day. We recognize that. It's unfortunate that it comes out as an F, but we all understand that that's not an indicator of the success that we know is happening on the campus.
Yes, ma'am, and I agree. Again, like I said, I really, I felt like things were already happening at Kiefer Crossing from the beginning of the school year when I stepped into this role and just seeing things that were happening there. I mean, we're really excited with the momentum that's been created with Mr. Sabios taking the reins and then, you know, some other members joining the team. But, yes, we are super excited about what's happening at Kiefer and at the other middle schools.
Thank you for the details. We appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
And we know you're going to do the best you can. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Back to the accountability ratings, the 23, 24, those were held up in court, correct? So, you didn't get those until like a month before you got the 24?
The last two years were released at the same time, and they were released in September. That's how come...
We didn't even have the opportunity to understand that we were in an F until they told us you'd been there for two years, correct?
Correct, officially, yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for clearing that.
So, item four on the agenda is reports and proposal of board members. Every year, the board president is required to announce whether each board member has met the required continuing education tracking. There's a requirement set forth that we must meet. With the exception of Mrs. Prickrel, who is not seeking reelection, all other board members, I'm happy to say, have met their individual training requirements. The team of eight training has been scheduled for December because we wanted to allow our newly-elected board member to attend that, and so, that would count for the year. Are there any other reports or proposals from board members? So, we'll move to item number five. And item number five on the agenda is a public hearing for Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas, or FIRST as the acronym. It'll be presented by Ms. Challette. Hello.
Hello. Okay, as she just said, I'm here to present the FIRST rating, Financial Integrity Rating System of Texas. This is a 24, 25 rating, but it's based on the 23, 24 data. I'm pleased to announce that New Caney ISD received an A once again for superior achievement. This rating has 21 indicators in it, and I'll quickly go through those. The first one through four are considered critical indicators. If you receive a no on any one of those, it's automatically a F or a substandard rating. We received yeses to all of them. The first one was, was your annual financial report submitted by the deadline of January 28th to TEA, and it was. Did we have an unmodified or a clean opinion for the financial report is indicator two, and we did. Indicator three is, was the school district in compliance with payment terms for all debt agreements for the fiscal year, and we were. And the number four, did the district make timely payments to TRS, TWC, and the IRS and other governmental agencies, and all of our payments were timely. Indicator number five deals with total net assets and the statement of net position, and was it greater than zero? Ours was greater than zero, so that is a ceiling passed. Indicator number six was the average change in fund balance over three years, less than 25% decrease. We have added to fund balance the past three years, and so, we had ceiling passed on that one as well. Indicator seven was cash on hand and current investments in the general funds sufficient to cover operating expenditures. That was a yes, so we received 10 points. That was the maximum points you could receive. Was the measure of current assets to current liability ratio for the school district sufficient to cover short-term debt? That's indicator number eight. That was a yes, so we received 10 points. Indicator number nine, the general fund revenue equal or exceed expenditures? That it did, so that's a 10 points. That's the max you can receive on that one as well. Indicator number 10 right now is not being evaluated by TEA, so they gave everybody 10 points on that one. Indicator number 11 is long-term liabilities to total assets of the school district sufficient to support long-term solvency? That was a yes, so we received 10 points on that as well. Indicator number 12 is the future debt requirements and the district's assessed property values. We are a high debt burden district, a fast-growth district. We're property poor, we're getting a little less property poor. We did lose points on that. That's the one we lose points on every year. We received four of the 10 points on that. Indicator number 13 was the administrative cost ratio, less than what the threshold the state sets is, and we received the 10 points on that. Indicator number 14 is if the student enrollment did not decrease, then we automatically pass that indicator, and our student enrollment has been increasing, so we got 10 points on that one as well. Indicator number 15 was the school district's ADA within the allotted range of the district's biennial pupil projection. So, basically, what we guessed we were going to have for ADA for the next two years, close, and the most you can get on that is five, and we got all five for that one. Indicator number 16, did the comparison of PIM's information and your audit report match, and was there less than a 3% variance? That is correct for us. It was less than 3%, and so, ceiling passed. Indicator number 17, did the external independent auditor report in the ARF that there were no material weaknesses in internal controls? So, we passed that one. Indicator number 18 deals with the audit report as well. Were there any material noncompliance with any grants? And there were not, so we got 10 points on that. 19 is that the school district posts the required financial information on its websites throughout the year. The most you could get is five, and we got five points on that. Indicator number 20 is did the school district administration and the school board discuss any type of changes or impact to local, state, and federal funding at a board meeting within 120 days of the adoption, and we do that through our budget workshops, so we're ceiling passed on that one. And then, indicator number 21 is, did the school district receive any adjusted repayment schedule for overpayments from TEA? We have not been overpaid from TEA, so the ceiling was passed on that. Also, we're required to do some disclosures for the superintendent and the school board at this meeting. The first one is the superintendent's employment contract. That is posted on our district website, so you can get to it on the website. The second one is any reimbursement received by or paid on behalf of the superintendent and the school board. This is for meals, lodging, transportation, fuel or mileage, memberships, and dues. For Superintendent Matt Calvert, it was 5,036. Mixon, 3,0686. Harrell, 1,0550. Prickwell, 1,0956. Trout, 2004. Turner, because he was on there at that time, was zero. Tompkins, 1,0947. And Sharp, 1,0942. We also have to report if there's any outside compensation or fees that are received by the superintendent for any type of professional consulting or professional services, and that was none for Mr. Calvert. Also, were there any gifts received by the executive officers or board members for that year of 250 or more in the aggregate? And that was none for the superintendent and all the board members. The last disclosure that we're required to present is if there were any business transactions between the school district and the board members for that time period, and there were none as well. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Item six on the agenda is the consent calendar, consisting of consideration of minutes, finance reports, purchasing reports, instruction reports, and administrative services items. Are there any questions or further discussion about item number six? Do we have a motion on the consent calendar as it is presented? Have a motion by Mr. Trout and a second by Ms. Tompkins. There being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? The motion carries. Item number seven on the agenda is to consider the award for new operations building and delegate authority to the superintendent or his designee to negotiate, finalize, and execute a construction contract, and it's presented by Mr. Wrestler. Hello.
Good evening. I tried to scoot over where you could see me, so. I'll start with Mr. Karla, if y'all don't mind, just real quick. I can attest that there were 56 pallets we delivered to his campus that his custodial crew had to unload, so it was definitely a mountain of supplies and materials. And also, at Porter L., Mr. Richard, he's helped me tremendously too with deliveries and cafeteria tables we got right before Christmas, I mean, right before school started this year. So, I can attest that those people that were honored tonight, they are truly heroes for the district in my book, too. But, for you this evening, though, I would like to recommend Gamma Construction as the general contractor for our new operations building. After going through our competitive seal proposal process, they were our number-one ranked bidder.
We were given the stuff in our board books about how you arrived at that decision. We looked over that, so I appreciate you putting that in there.
Yes, ma'am.
Great read.
Yes, ma'am, it's...
But, it's better than just saying, "They did it."
It's a process.
It's a process.
Yes, it is a process, and we make sure we adhere to the process and do things properly.
I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd rather get to look at that than you say, "This is who we're using." I appreciate it. Thank you.
Good, very good.
So, are there any questions or further discussion? Do we have a motion to approve the award for the new operations building to Gamma Construction and to delegate authority to the superintendent or his designee to negotiate, finalize, and execute a construction contract with Gamma Construction? We have a motion by Ms. Sharp and a second by Mr. Alters. There being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? No abstaining? Okay, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number eight on our agenda is consideration of approval of recommended rezoning changes presented by Blake Carroll. Come on back.
These are the changes that we discussed approximately 20, 30 minutes ago. But, any questions popped up in your head since we talked? Downtown, I have to remember that, Ms. Carroll, that's a good one.
Is it not? Ty, is it downtown?
I love it. I'm going to start using that in my meetings.
It's downtown. Yeah. Okay, one, we went from a one-red-light town to a, we got a downtown. Yeah, okay. Item number, let's see, this is number eight, and we want, do we have a motion to approve the recommended rezoning changes?
No move.
So, I have a motion by Mr. Alters and a second by Ms. Tompkins. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstaining? The motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number nine on the agenda is a closed meeting. The board will now adjourn into closed session pursuant to the following sections of the Texas Open Meetings Act.